All rise. Commissioner Notestein, if you can lead us in a prayer and pledge.
Since November 11th, 2025 is Veterans Day. Lord, let us honor our veterans, worthy men and women who gave their best when called upon to serve and protect our country. We pray that you will bless them for their unselfish service in the continued struggle to preserve our freedom, our safety, and our country's heritage for all of us. Bless them for the hardships they faced, for the sacrifices they made, for the many difficult contributions to America's victories over tyranny and oppression. We respect them, we thank them, we honor them, we are proud of them, and we pray that you watch over these special people and blame, bless them with peace and happiness. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I just would like to make a quick announcement, and that is that this meeting will be livestreamed, I'm sorry, posted at a later date. We are experiencing some technical difficulties here in the administration building today and throughout the county due to the heavy winds last evening.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. Your first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held October 16th, 2025, noting the correction to the opening of bids as listed.
Motion approved with corrections.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes. Are there any guests here concerning county business? May I stand and state your name?
I have something to report. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Larry Link, United States Marine Corps retired. I gave paperwork to Commissioner Sifranco. He's got to deal with my situation as necessary. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And for matter of record, it has to deal with taxation and how properties are taxed in a municipality and in the county. So we will be handing all of that off to our tax assessor and that, and handling that situation, and it will keep you abreast. It's more of a local borough issue than it is, it's actually a borough issue and not a county issue. So, okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Next item is the Report of Executive Sessions held.
On Tuesday, 10/20, on Tuesday, the 21st of October at 9:00 a.m., on Tuesday, the 20th, 21st of October at 10:30 a.m., on Monday, the 27th of October at 2:00 p.m., and on Wednesday, the 29th of October at 11:00 a.m. So are four, and they were all for personnel reasons.
Okay, item number 25619, the budget transfers.
Motion approved.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25620, supplemental appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Excuse me. Item number 25621, the expenditures for payroll.
Motion to ratify.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25622, the expenditures for payroll of October 31st.
Motion to ratify.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25623, expenditures for October 23rd.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 624, one check for October 24th.
Motion to ratify.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25625, expenditures dated October 30th.
Motion to ratify.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25626, October 31st expenditures.
Motion to ratify.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25627, expenditures for November 6th.
Motion approved.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25628, an expenditure dated November 3rd.
Motion to ratify.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25629, three treasurer's reports.
Motion approved as presented dated the 24th of October, 17th of October, and 31st of October.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
We will recess the commissioners' meeting right now and go to salary board.
Your first item is the approval of the minutes of the salary board meeting held October 2nd and reconvened October 16th, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second. Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yeah, let me correct that. I was not present on the October 2nd. I was on vacation that week. Sure, it was the 2nd. Was it the 2nd? Yeah, October 2nd. So, I would have stayed.
It does say at the bottom, the three apps.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll make that correction.
But it has present up at the top. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Your vote, Mr. Notestein?
I abstained officially.
Now that Mr. Notestein knows where he is, I won't guess.
I didn't miss his.
Are there any guests here concerning salary board business? Hearing none?
Next item is the Report of Executive Sessions held.
We had one on November 3rd at 10:30 a.m., and obviously, it was to discuss personnel.
Your next item, adult probation. Judge Nanovic?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I know the first item on the agenda is the two probation officers for pretrial services. And just so there's no misunderstanding, I think I've reviewed this several times with the county commissioners. This involves a grant that the county received several years ago. It involved two pretrial service probation officers and one part-time guideline writer. I believe the grant ended sometime in October. And it's my understanding the commissioners do not intend to fund those positions any longer. I was opposed to that, and I think I've indicated that several times. So I don't intend to make the motion to abolish it. I would vote against it, but I understand it's on the agenda, and I suspect it's going to pass. But it's not my motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Okay, Judge Nanovic?
No.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
And then the next motion is to establish the position of one certified recovery specialist at 1999 per hour, a grade nine, step A, effective as of November 6th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
And I know there was going to be something on for domestic relations, but I understand that requires further study, is what I was told this morning, so hopefully I'll be back for a future meeting on that.
Yes. Thank you, your honor.
Okay, your next item is the Communication Center. Abolish the position of one senior dispatcher at the AFMI union prevailing rate, effective November 6th, 2025.
Motion to abolish.
Second.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Establish the position of one 911 operator at the AFMI union prevailing rate, effective November 6th, 2025.
Motion established.
Second.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
With that said, we will recess the salary board until November 20th at 10:30 a.m. Reconvene the commissioners' meeting.
Your next item is number, item number 25630, the Personnel Report for County Departments.
Motion approved.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Oh, yes, except for Megan Veen of Lee Heighton, since she is my step-granddaughter, so I will abstain from that vote.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Number 25631, the acknowledgements for courts and row offices.
Motion acknowledged.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed. Copies will be made available to the press upon request. Advertising, item number 25632, the Carbon County Whole Home Repair Program.
Motion approved.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25633, a bid award for the Whole Home Repair Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25634, award of additional contracts.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25635, the CDBG Lansford Borough Clearance and Demolition.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25636, Boards and Authorities, Reappointment Airport Authority.
Motion to reappoint.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25637, Conservation District Reappointments.
Motion to reappoint.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Number 25638, reappoint, excuse me, appointment of the commissioner representative.
Motion to approve the appointment of Sifranco.
I don't know. Second.
You want to do it?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein? Mr. Sifranco?
I don't have a choice.
Item number 25639, the Planet Commission Reappointments.
Motion approved of the reappointments.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
The Carbon County Safety Committee, item number 25640, updated bylaws.
Motion approved.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25641, the Carbon County Treatment and Recovery Foundation, the transfer of funds.
Motion approved of the transfer.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item numbers 25645, children and youth agreements.
Motion approved and execute.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25643, Communications 911, Green's Communications.
Motion to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25644, LSA Grant and Resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25645, the Correctional Facility, Hobert Service.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Number 25646, Human Services, a non-block grant plan.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Number 25644, excuse me, 647, the Fourth Quarter TFAP Report for Submission.
Motion accept.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Number 25648, the TFAP Program Agreement with Second Harvest.
Motion approved and execute.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Number 25649, Information Technology Eaton Service Agreement.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25650, Emergency Operations and Training Center, agreement with Integra One.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25651, Josiah White Park DCNR Peer Grant and Resolution.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25652, Juvenile Probation, Electronic Monitoring Amendment Number Three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25653, Opioid Settlement Funds, the Public Service Advertising for a billboard.
Motion approved.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25654, Planning and Development, a change order for Whole Home Repair Program contract.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25655, Rescind the Fiscal Year 2024 CDBG Revision Number Four, Jim Thorpe Borough.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Item number 25656, a Service Agreement, 525 Iron Street, SA Communal.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Solicitor's report?
Thank you. First, under Children and Youth, item 25-657, agreement with Pennsylvania Western University.
Motion approved and execute.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Pocono County's Workforce Development Board, item 25-658, Cost Reimbursement Agreement between the Board and the County of Monroe.
Motion approved and execute.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Likewise, item 25-659, Cost Reimbursement Agreement between the Board and the Workforce Alliance.
Motion approved and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Tax Assessment, item 25-660, refund of county taxes due to Board of Appeals decision in the amount of $167.45.
Motion approved and make payment.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Tax Claim, item 25-661, an agreement with Paramount Abstract Incorporated for lien searches for the upset tax sale.
Motion approved.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
And lastly, item 25-662, Agreement with Paramount Abstract Incorporated for searches for the judicial sales.
Motion approved.
Second?
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes.
Mr. Sifranco?
Yes.
Nothing further for the Solicitor's report.
Any further business from the Board? No? Commissioners' reports, Mr. Honor?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Notestein?
Yes, first of all, I want to mention the parade, hopefully on Sunday afternoon for the Veterans Day Parade, pending the outcome of the weather. Could be postponed for a week, 2:00 p.m. kickoff in Lee Heighton. I believe it starts in the, around Ninth and Cole Street, comes down Cole Third, and I think, I'm not sure if it's Iron or Mahoning Street that they go out, so please come out, support our veterans. If they do have it, if it starts to rain, bring an umbrella in case, so. Also, our veterans program in Josiah White Park on Monday morning at 9:00 a.m., or 9:15, I'm sorry, 9:15 a.m., so again, it's going to be a cool one. Wear your thermals. We'll keep the speeches short, so it's going to be a cool one, so we'll see what happens there. The other thing I want to bring up is the, right now, we've been tracking the, and I've brought this subject up before with House Bill 1037, which would increase the fee for cellular service and Internet protocols except for the 911 fee, was presented at $2.20, which is what the County Commissioners Association of Emergency Services Committee has been pushing for. Last time, two years ago, we requested 230, you know, dropped that back, and unfortunately, that has been stuck in committee because of the chairperson of the Emergency Preparedness and Veterans Affairs Committee feels that we do not need an increase. He kept it at 195, the current rate, for the next three years. Now, here's the problem, if you look in the, today, there's a, we're changing radio systems, we're updating to digital. A grant is being applied for, for the portables, for the police only, this doesn't cover anybody else, $949,000 plus. That does not cover fire. EMS is pretty well changed over. These are fees, and they pay for the salaries, a good percent of the salaries, they pay for the maintenance and technology, we're looking at upgrading the system, there's a grant for $5 million just to install in the radio towers and the comm center, the new digital system, which we're still hoping to get that grant because of the failure to pass budgets and that. We lost last year's round of grants, we're telling it's going to be in this year, we'll wait and see. Hopefully, they'll be able to install that possibly by the end of 2026. You know, and my argument is, our expenses keep going up, our dispatchers, retention is a problem. I think our dispatchers deserve a fair wage. They're stressful jobs, and the turnover is horrendous. So we need proper staffing levels. A lot of times, we're down to two people, and most of the time, that's okay, but if a major event occurs, is when we have a problem. And I've been in through the, when I was in emergency management and other situations where five dispatchers are not enough during certain events. So I'm really perturbed with this, and I understand there's a couple of reasons. They don't want to raise taxes. Well, who the heck do you think is going to pay to operate that system? It comes back on us. Just because you don't want to raise taxes, we get stuck with it. We pay all the bills. It's a fee on the carriers, the carriers, some of the carriers oppose that, and you're bowing to the carriers and your own personal gain by not having to raise taxes and putting it back in the counties. You know, and I feel it's a great disrespect for our first responders, and nobody wants to be the bad guys, but when they pass these laws and the fees go up, you think we're going to have a flat inflation rate over the next three years? Absolutely not. Our costs keep going up, our energy bills, our electric, tower sites, propane for heating for the generators and the facilities at the tower sites. I am really perturbed by Senator Mastriano, and I tried to call his office this morning. I left the number here. I told him if he would call back by chance, or his office, get me out of this meeting because I certainly want to talk to him and voice my displeasure. And I certainly hope he gets the message. We will be meeting again in the County Commissioners Association. I do sit in the Committee of Emergency Preparedness and Veterans Affairs, you know, and that's a top priority. And I know the other commissioners that sit on that committee, both parties, you know, it's all in favor. There is no one opposes that fee because they know what it costs. We've taken just over $2 million now. And if they don't even pass this bill by the, it's supposedly, try to follow it. I don't even see a session day scheduled for the Senate this month. When they're gonna vote on it, I don't know. It says today, but on the calendar, they're not even scheduled. If this goes away on January 31st, we're gonna lose the $2 million a year that we get from that 911 fee. So, I hope these people in Harrisburg will wake up and stand up and not afraid of these carriers and make themselves looking good. You know, think about the counties, think about the first responders, think about the public.
And I will come and finish your computer, Don Wayne. I wanna, I'll help you out here a little bit.
I'll let it go. Pouring my pop-up vessel.
I mean, my opinion of it is too, I mean, since I've been here, there's always upgrades to these systems. You know, they did this thing with, even like you can text now, today. They, you know, we're always working on upgrading things, and everybody has a phone, but everybody's paying a $5 fee. There's probably two or three $5 fees that are on your phone that you don't even know what they're for. This is essential for the safety of the people of our community, and I think that should be $5, and the other ones should be put down to the $1.90, you know what I mean? Because this is like, this is like, like Wayne said, where are we gonna get $5 million to change all this stuff over? And that's probably just the start of it.
That's just the start.
That's just the start.
That doesn't count the police, which I said was almost over $900,000, those radios each for a portable alone. That doesn't count the mobiles, the expense. Every major incident that happens, what is the biggest single problem that the emergency responders have? 911, prime example. Talking to different agencies, talking in hazmat situations or mass casualty situations. One person can't talk to the other. Going digital will improve this system. If you read the report, the fatal fire that occurred in Schuylkill County, it was a contributing factor to lack of ability. You have three counties involved in that fatal fire, three different sets of frequencies. Nobody could talk to each other. So, you know, if they don't get their heads out of their backside and start taking care of these emergency responders, they're lucky they have what they have today, especially in the fire service. We saw how the EMS went from almost all volunteers, very few volunteers left in EMS. They're all paid now. We cannot afford to have that happen in the fire service because it takes a lot more people when there's an emergency.
How do you really feel about it, Wayne?
Mr. Sefranco?
A few things. Number one, I think everybody, if you've been watching social media, that I know there's been a lot being said about the Lee Heighton Senior Center out there. I just would like everyone to be aware that the county commissioners are currently working back and forth, put representatives from the Lee Heighton Borough to resolve the issues that Lee Heighton Borough has been having. We'll have more on that as those discussions progress. I'm just gonna simply say this, don't always believe everything you read, and that's nothing against you, Amy, but sometimes people post on social media some things that are a little out there, and some of it is truth. But I would ask you to, most of the time, I know other people go on about it, but do believe in some mainstream media because they usually do a really good job of doing fact research. So, as we work through that, we will have some more on that, but I would like to thank the representatives from Lee Heighton Borough who have reached out to all three members of the board here, and we should definitely have some more on that after their borough gets a chance to sit and discuss it. So, we'll go from there. The other thing I wanted to bring up, as you had heard earlier, I feel bad the judge left, and I respect his opinion, but it should be noted at the beginning of this year, the county commissioners held to the fact that we will not create new positions. We will not, we'll work to fund those positions and move those positions as best as we can. Those two positions were paid for by a grant. When the grant went away, there were not, not that we're opposed to those positions, but it simply comes down to a cost issue. We just do not have, at this time, with no state money coming in or anything else, we're not going to fund positions. I do thank the departments that are consolidating some positions. The budget has been extremely tough this year. We're still working through coming up with that. We're looking to try to keep everybody that we have here, here, but there is going to be some positions that are open on the books that are going to be eliminated going into next year's budget. And that holds where we were. That's not even, that's not even hiring anybody, that's just eliminating some positions that, we're looking to make some cost-cutting measures. But that does not affect those who are currently here. I want to make that perfectly clear because that's another rumor that's out there, that we're consolidating people, and we are not. The, but we are consolidating jobs, but we're not eliminating people. So, that's kind of where we're at with that. You'll see that, there's a couple of positions you'll be seeing in postings in the future where additional responsibilities are going to people, and obviously, pay grades and that are changing. Up front, the county received notification that we received a $1.4 million increase in our healthcare insurance going into 2026. So, that has become a huge factor here in working through the budget. The other thing I wanted to know is, it was very nice of the state to send me an email earlier this week to let me know that all of our financials are up to date, and our third check for $1.6 million sits in Harrisburg waiting for the budget to be passed so they could mail it to us. So, that's, it's always nice to let you know, I got your money, come and get it. So, I'm not gonna really get into a whole big incident of that. I'm gonna give the answer that the governor gave back on 7/7/25. I don't know how he meant this, but his quote to that was, "We can't fix this for them. The consequences hang on them." So, I will take the same quote as what the governor said, and the consequences of what's happening in the state hangs on the governor. I'm not gonna get into anything further on that. And finally, I think, I'd like to thank Christine, Christine LeClaire, for a fine job last night. Once again, I think we had over 400 veterans out of Pence Peak from throughout the county. It's always great to be in the company of, you know, some of the finest people this county has to offer. They had a great event last night out in Pence Peak, a really nice dinner. It's always great to sit there and listen to the stories, but just to see everyone get together and just, you know, share where they've been from, I mean, we have people from 1960 all the way up to, you know, serving in how many different branches. It's a job very well done. Her department, the Veterans Affairs, does an outstanding job. I can't say much, enough about that, but with that being said...
It was funded by donations this year.
Yes. It was all fully funded by donations and dinner and all. So, that speaks volumes for a county this size, it really does. And for Christine to go out and work on that. So, I commend her for that on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. I know we said it last night, but just for a matter of public record. And then, as Commissioner Noestine said, find time, make time to get out for the Veterans Day Parade on Sunday. Get out there, if there's a little bit of overcast, don't worry about it. I'm sure the rain will hold up. If it doesn't, we'll make those adjustments. But try to get down to Lee Heighton for the Veterans Day Parade. It's definitely a very worthwhile cause and very worthwhile event to attend. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else that I have. Oh, I would like, finally, home health, the home grants. You may remember for many years, there was nothing really happening with that. And I really, I say, you know, nice job to the planning commission, the planning board down there, Dave and Jason and their whole staff, they've really stepped it up. We loosened up, commissioners worked in getting the program much more streamlined. I think we went from how many pages, Rock?
A lot.
To two?
A lot, like 18 to two.
So, that has been, that has been obviously working because we're getting bids and we're getting people in, and I thank them for following through.
Well, people were looking at it, and they were scared of the application, and it was stuff in there that wasn't even needed. I mean, as long as they had the insurance and did the proper procedures, that's all you needed. I think it's a page and a half now, it's down to.
And it's, you know, it's working together, so. With that, that's all I have. Anything else? Meeting adjourned. You got three weeks of questions built up, huh? I'll let Amy go first. I can see she's sitting there leaning in.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
First, with regards to the general fund loans, one to every agency, what will that cover?
Payroll, right? Payroll, operating expenses within. It does not cover any providers. So, it's just payroll, operating expenses, day-to-day, that kind of stuff. No providers are being paid out. Now, there's always that, well, what does this one do? They're providing, no, it's none of the contract, none of those that you see on that table are included in that.
Well, they're also children. With regards to the budget, I know now we're in November, October was dicey, November's here. Where does your coffers stand officially?
I have a meeting today at 2:30. Not I, but the three of us, and we'll be sitting with our financials again, and he will give us an update as to where we stand on the drawdown. I could tell you that we were informed earlier this month, as in October was dicey because we were able to move some stuff around, and people often say, what do you do with the parking lot money? Well, a good example of that is last year, as I said, we gave that, and we've been pulling money out of the parking lot fund to continue to offset some of these expenses. And we had been given a projected date of around December 18th where we'd hit the wall. We may have been able to push that date down a little bit further into the new year. And then, we're obviously gonna have to come back in here with a tan, as we did last year. Borrow money upfront, we'll begin preparing that, and then go from there. As far as, as you had said, borrow, borrowing money from the treasurer, you know, the issue here comes down to this, is I think when it comes to the treasurer, we're hoping that maybe, now that election's over, maybe everybody gets their heads back together and they start, you know, working for the people, and they satisfy that, and that'll help release money, but it doesn't solve our problem with how much money we lost because of lack of interest. And that's something we're gonna discuss later today. So, numbers is, it could be all over. Am I correct, Ellie? I mean, to try to even, you know, it's, it's, every day, it's a different, you know, there's, we just, the joint board, we voted not to pay providers and get loans, but we extended the line of credit. So, there's, there's a lot of juggling going on right now.
And with this letter that is on your correspondence from Secretary of the Budget, is that that one you were referring to saying, hey, my money's there?
Uh huh. It's nice to get that, isn't it?
Check's in the mail.
Checks in, yeah, it's not even in the mail yet.
Almost there.
You know what's funny, not funny, but what's odd about that? How long you heard about, oh, it's the county's fault, we don't have our paperwork in, everything, and the back-and-forth member fighting? So, we, the board here sat down with everyone at this table and came up with an active plan as to how do we address the financial issues, it's children, youth, we brought a firm in, we did all the, we've addressed it, because right there's proof that it's, it was always the county's fault. Well, right now, that shows you that all our stuff, that's for the, what, the first quarter of next year?
Okay, with regards to the LSA grant for the portable radios, I know you, this is the second application that you guys did. The first one we got four here in $60,000 for that. How many radios would this cover?
So, I think it was 25, I think it was 20, 20-some radios, and that's for police departments, adult probation, juvenile probation, sheriff's office, et cetera. Still won't cover it all, I don't believe. So, it's...
So, you guys haven't even started looking at, like, helping the fire companies and all that, where we're getting...
No, because we're competing against ourselves, you know, when we do these LSA grants. I know a lot of the fire departments and et cetera are applying on their own for grants, and the problem there is they're competing each other. Be better off, what we did years ago, when we switched to the radio system, we did it for everyone. And at that time, there was a little bit more money available, and we did get a grant, covered over $900,000. Now, we're talking how many years ago when they upgraded the system last time, and it covered probably about 75% of the cost, and then it was, you know, percentage rate for those needing the radios, you know, to the municipality. But it's, Lee Heighton, I know, alone, I know, to outfit all the apparatus and the portable radios, $500,000. Yeah, just for one department. Some have been buying on their own. Our analog system is still gonna be in service for another two, three years after we get started. It's not like we have to do it today, and it's gonna be multi-year grant applications and funding, and you gotta prepare for the worst. I hope the municipalities step up to the plate as well. So, it's, yeah, I don't know, I didn't find it right away. I'll look for it and find out for sure how many radios. But at $9,000 apiece, you can figure it out. Almost 10, might as well say 10,000, so about...
Now, you said the analog will be still up and running from two, three years after. What does it, it's just been time-like and change, you know, to actually go to digital?
It depends on the budgets and the grants and everything, and coming up with the funding. And, you know, and this doesn't help us with the budget in pass, you know, it keeps pushing things off because it didn't pass the budget in time in, back in March, I guess it was, and we lost $500,000 funding, you know, that we applied for, we applied again. Keep being told that it's a congressional one, too, that will, should get the funding next year. Well, I'll believe it when I see it. So, that's just for the infrastructure, the comm center, upgrading the tower sites, et cetera.
And if by chance that House bill is gonna get passed and that fee comes in, does that also put this basically in the back burner, this digital upgrade?
Oh, yeah, it'll push it back if that doesn't get passed, or the increase. I think it'll pass at the 195, but our costs are going up every year, so.
With regards to the grant application for the Josiah White Park, can you explain what this vendor, the other one, else is?
You know who I'm gonna have tell you that? Jen. You wanna speak? She doesn't, huh? You sure? While, and we do have a new grant writer, but what it is, is we sat down at commissioners' and we looked at Joshua Park, and we walked through it. And there's been, obviously, a large number, large number. It's 400,000 people visit the train station. The, as Rocky always says, they're wearing the hinges right off the doors. It's that simple. So, the overall, how the park's laid out, not, but how, where vendors are sitting, how people flow, how the walk patterns go, that has gotta be looked at, has gotta be seriously studied. So, what we did is we got a grant, we're applying for a grant. Pocahontas Mountain Vacation Bureau agreed to do the match for the grant so that it doesn't cost the county there, and we're going to be having someone come in to do a study to see how to improve the park, how to improve how we do the vending, how we do the vending, the vending, and the reason I'm turning to Jen is because I really commend her because she literally wrote the grant. She did. She took time out of here at the commissioner's office to sit down and spearhead the writing of it, and Ellie said, let her dig into it, and she really did. And between her and Dave Bodnar, she really has done a great job. And obviously, we got it all together. You see, it's like, but what it's gonna do is it's gonna tell you how people should walk through the park, where people should be in the park, where the vendors should set up in the park, what the fees for the park are, what vendors we should allow, because you often hear, oh, there's not enough food to eat or places to go to get service. And then, like Commissioner Honor and Noestine, I stuff walk through, and there's people selling wares. Well, if the issue is that there's not enough food, then why are we getting people selling wares?
And that's the thing about, like, when it started off, it was the food thing that it started. And the food was actually addressed. We had like five or six vendors that were there, and then I think when they had all, I don't know what you want, when the doo-doo hit the fan, I should make it nice, but I say, but, and I come up there, and there's like four vendors in the park, and they're selling the same things that people are selling on Broadway. You know, why, and why are they bringing people in there that are taking it away from the people, you know, the businesses in Jim Thorpe itself? And that was like my biggest gripe. So, I think it's very good to how I'm in here that say, okay, this is what it is, the food should be here, and try to separate things, but it's getting to the point you can't even walk through it, and the amount of people that you get coming here, I mean, sometimes you could have 7,000 people coming in one day, and then you put four vendors in, and you wonder why they can't walk through the park? That's why. You got too many vendors in the park. So, that's what we're trying to do, trying to get it separated a little bit and break it down, and that was our main focus, to get food here. Because when you bring that many people in, there's no way that all these restaurants can handle all that business. So, they're actually trying to help out, too, because it's actually bad for their business, too, because if you can't get in for two hours, they're not gonna come back when the train's not running to visit some of these restaurants. So, it's, I think it's gonna really be a good thing to help us out.
And you may have noticed where we blocked off the corral, so people can walk from the east, and that has been a huge help. So, it really has. So, Jen sat down and pulled all of that together, and then we're gonna get somebody coming to take all the information we have, because we all have different ideas, and somebody needs to put it all together, and we're doing that. But if there's a grant available and parks can come in and do that for us, not only does that grant help us with that, but as Commissioner Honor said there, if there's things that we need to do different, there's grants available to set that up. And I mean, that's kind of, you know, the county, you know, everybody always says, oh, you have all this money from the parking lot. Well, one thing you need to know with the parking lot is every time you go by the parking lot and it says full, the county's not making money because the slot's full. Now, we made our money, but you're not, like, it was, oh, it's full, I gotta be making all kind of money. It's just like a grocery store, if there's no food on the shelf, there's nothing to buy. Well, if there's no parking spots in the lot, there's, so the county needs to know, how do we better flow that? And the other issue we're having, and the people that need to come to the county during the week and do business in the courthouse and in the administration building, it's beginning to affect them as well. So, we need to know how do we manage those, the residents that need to use these buildings, and how many spots do you kind of break off, and where do you locate them, and how do you better lay it all out? Because it's just sit down and put it all together, and that's kind of what this whole grant does. Am I correct, Jen? Yeah, I knew that, but I would make sure. She's the one that did the real deal.
With regards to the train station, I know the motion trust is coming out at the end of the month. Any idea on there, what's going on?
I think this grant kind of addresses part of that as well. I know it does. It's to try to look at, what is the best usage for that space? Is it bathrooms? Is it the welcoming center? Is it additional space for whatever? I mean, I can tell you this much, a lot of people may have said, oh, well, the train station, the train could go in there and sell tickets. Well, there's no way you could sell tickets in there in a door that's, I mean, you gotta think about stuff like that. You know, divisions of what you see doesn't, it doesn't make sense. I think the key that people need to know is, yes, the trust company's leaving, and obviously, you see how that's probably affecting their business, but the other point is, the rumor out there, well, the Reading Blue Mountain Railroad has bought the train station, and the train station's for sale, that is the furthest thing from the truth. That is not, and, oh, they're gonna go in there and own that spot, and then they'll own the train, that is the furthest thing from the truth. That's why this whole grant is. Do we work with the train and Andy Mueller and his, yes, absolutely. You know, we all have to have good relationship, and we work with him for many things, but we're not selling anything. And this is just to open up space so we can address the need for space.
With that House bill, you said committee chair for that, is that Senator Mastriano that committee chair?
Yes, committee chair. Yeah, it was, the first proposal was Senator Muth at the 1037 with the, yeah, Senate Bill 1037 at 220 with the CPI. So, yeah, but now we sit and argue. This, he, they're playing games out there, no doubt about it, because a Democrat recommended that. He comes up with a different one. This doesn't even bring it up at committee meetings. He comes to the floor with 1078, finds out there's gonna be an amendment to the bill to increase to 220, pulls it off the floor. So, it's nothing but a bunch of political bull crap, of playing games, you know, and everything, and it's frustrating, and I'm getting tired of it, you know? It's just unbelievable, you know, and they, you know, they, the carriers, they don't want to raise it because it looks like they're raising it. Well, hey, like I said, somebody's gotta raise it. They don't, we do.
That's all I have, and thank you, Don.
All your questions are answered, or not?
Just one, the one we talked about, with the SNAP benefits, I know a lot of people have been talking about it earlier in the week with the cut being made. How's that looking here in Carters County?
I, SNAP obviously is a federal program. I do know that we received a email or a correspondence from Representative Heffley, something about $26,000 that was coming in for food purchases, but it had to be done through, like, Second Harvest or something. Commissioner Honor may be on top of that a little bit more. But obviously, it's gonna affect, it's definitely affecting people, SNAP benefits cut, but that's all I can really comment on there, that I would have something concrete to show you. And when that check gets here, I have no idea, but I would, my advice to you on that, so I don't give you wrong information, would be to call Representative Heffley's office and find out about that.
That, with the SNAP is federal, so the, and I questioned that this week because I was being questioned how that works, that the people's SNAP card, that, when that funds are released, it gets put on their cards automatically. So, and that's on the federal side. So who knows how long that's gonna take once, once they do pass the budget.
And then, you mentioned about looking at a loan because of the county. Are you still looking into that?
Yes. Last year, if you remember, the county did a tan loan, which is a tax anticipation note, and that will definitely be happening next year without a doubt. We had planned that we could probably scale back that amount of that loan this year, and that we could begin to start getting more in line. But obviously, with the state budget, that's not gonna happen. So now the problem is, do we stay at the eight, or do we have to increase that because of what's happening? And when you increase that, you gotta understand, we have to have that paid back by the end of the year. And then that becomes an issue as to where we are with taxes. And no, like Commissioner Noestine said, nobody here, there's no, not one person up here wants, and we're working to try to eliminate as much of that as we can. But we're hitting the wall on, on a lot of, now we're getting, now we're getting down to the, the real eating potatoes. And as you can see, that one of it was with positions. We just simply don't have the money to fund positions, or you keep money there, and it's, it's not gonna happen. That's, that's, that's a big cut that the county hasn't done in, in many years. And we don't want to get into, obviously, cutting people, but positions are going to go away, and there is going to be consolidation of positions.
And you can even look at it like the two positions that we abolished, they're not really being filled. I mean, there might be somebody in it for three, four months, and then they quit and go on with something else. And now this other position that we established is actually gonna help people in recovery get out of prison so it doesn't cost us more in prison. And probably this one move here probably saved us $40,000. So I think this might be the norm for our budget throughout every department, and we're just gonna have to keep going at that because, like he said, nobody wants to raise taxes, but we're gonna be forced into it. I mean, eventually, we're gonna run out of money. I mean, if we don't get it in, and our taxes don't, we don't get the majority of it until usually like May, April, May. So what are we gonna do for the next three months, you know, once, once the money runs out? What are you gonna do January, February, and March? You're gonna have to do something.
And not to call her out, but sitting back there is our HR director. She's here because she knows there's some positions that she's been meeting with department heads from the Commissioners' office. And there are, there are departments that are already working on, they're not going to be filling those positions, and she's working on making up the title. And the approach the board's taking going into the budget, as you had said, is, and Commissioner Aron alluded to that, is when you're looking at a $1.4 million increase in healthcare, that's just keeping what's here. We need to take departments, and we've said this all along, we haven't hired, and if we did, it was consolidation or fill the positions that are there. But now it's to the point of eliminating, and then we're gonna shift the workload to additional work to other people who can do it, and we're gonna pay them accordingly for that. But on the back end of that, it's gonna save us on insurances, it's gonna save us on, on some salary, and that's, that's the type of cuts that the Commissioners are currently going into. Because when you start getting a little deeper, then, then it really starts to hurt. And we're not here to unemployed people or lay people off. We're here to try to, obviously, things change, but as time goes on, you're gonna make those changes. But it's a little bit quicker this year.
And then we also have to cover the interest on the loan.
The worst, the thing that...
That's another thing.
I think the thing that you gotta realize that really hurts the county is, in May, we have like, maybe $17 million, give or take, whatever, in the account. That's our biggest time, and that's when the biggest investment is, and that's when you're starting to get interest. And you take that interest, and that interest helps obviously pay increases in salary, pay increases in healthcare. We never had the chance to, to get to that this year because we've been paying since June 30th. You name it.
And our, our taxpayers are very good. Like, our taxpayers pay the money on time, and they want to save money also. And now what are we gonna do? We're gonna tax them on the money that we should have got. You know, it's, it's like one of them things, like, we have a very good tax base of people, and the majority of our taxes come in in April and May. There's very few that linger on. I think we have almost like 97% of the people, or 94% of the people pay that first month. And that's what we always depend on. And now what are we gonna do? Oh, yeah, we gotta get a loan, but by the way, it costs us $600,000 on top of it for the interest, and that's not right. So that's where we sit.
And one other thing, you know, let it go, like, we could go all night day here. I could talk about this. But a good example is open space. Over the course of getting open space up and running, I think the county from our general fund has probably lent the open space committee close to a million, over a million dollars. Well, that money has to come back to the general fund here. In order to do that, open space has to get money. Well, in order to get open space money, we obviously have to go get a bond, and, and that's all been voted on, and the taxpayers have already agreed to that by a vote. But that means a tax increase, not generated by anybody here, and I'm not trying, but generated by simply a valid vote. Well, if, if we take that right there alone to go and go get that money and do it, you're probably looking at three quarters of a mill, just to pay back what's due. Now, if you go to the 10 million, we could really start running some numbers here. So the county does not want to go get a bond for a high number for two reasons. One, you gotta start paying it, you know, you gotta, well, you're only gonna pay what comes out. But what I'm getting is, right now, if you remember last year, because of where things were, and we've settled that out, our bond rating went down. So now is the worst time for the county to be trying to borrow money. It's gonna cost us more money to borrow money. So we're trying to get that rectified, and as you're trying to get that rectified, you're carrying that so that you can go later, when the timing is right, that you get the taxpayer the best rate on that bond at that time. And, and that's, that's the back end of what people in, in the public, and that's, that's why the three of us are here. We, we signed up for this job. We have to figure it out. But when the state does what they do, it, and then send me a letter to tell me they have money, I could, I'll just let my comments alone. Anything else? Before I let you go, thank you for getting the news out about Perryville and the power out the other day. A lot of people saw it, said they were really happy to know that it was vote, and we did have a, they did have it back on within two and a half to four hours, I guess. But I was amazed at how many people actually were happy that they knew what was going on. So I do thank you for that. Anything else? Everyone, enjoy your weekend. Hope to see you all at the Veterans Day Parade. Have a good one.